The Bakers. Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Jackson?
Here.
Councilor Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilor Linehan?
Yes.
Councilor McCarthy?
Here.
Councilor O'Malley?
Present.
Councilor Presley? Councilor Wu? Councilor Yancey?
Yes.
And Councilor Zachem? Mr. President, we have a quorum.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for councilors and guests to please rise as I ask Councilor Baker to come to the podium to introduce today's clergy. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask all members and guests to remain standing as Councilor Baker will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor Baker?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. I apologize for being late. I was in some conversations outside. Try not to do that again. Today's my pleasure to introduce to the council and to the city Pastor Cornell Miller, who is the pastor at the Waymark Seventh-day Adventist Church in Dorchester, the old, the former St. Williams Church. Pastor Miller was born in the Bronx, New York, and grew up in Harlem. He's a graduate of Oakwood University in Huntsville, Alabama, with a Bachelor's of Arts in Technology and Sociology, Theology and Sociology, sorry about that. In addition, he has a Master's of Divinity from St. Andrews University in Barron Springs, Michigan. He's been in the ministry for 43 years. He doesn't look that old, but he's been there for 43 years and has been the pastor at the Waymark Seventh-day Adventist Church in Dorchester for the past four years. Before coming to Boston, he was a pastor of the Jefferson Avenue Seventh-day Adventist Church in Rochester, New York. And while in Boston, Pastor Miller resides in the rectory at the Waymark Seventh-day Adventist Church located on Dorchester Avenue. And it's not unlike to see the pastor come to our meetings in the neighborhood so he's not only the pastor in the church, but he's also involved in the neighborhood. You see him walking Dorchester Avenue. He's an integral part of our neighborhood without further ado. Pastor Cornell Miller. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let us bow our heads for a word of prayer. Our God, we give you thanks for the blessings of another day, for a privilege whereby we could come and to do the work that you have assigned us to do. We always invite your presence in the midst of us, that whatsoever we do will benefit you and also benefit those in whom we serve. Continue to guide us and direct us in all that we do and say, that at the end, your name will be glorified. For this, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Miller, for your inspiring message and prayer. Councilor Baker?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Councilor Baker. Thank you, Pastor Cornell Miller. At this time, we have an important presentation, and I'd like to ask Councilor Flaherty and Councilor Baker to join me. So today, we're going to recognize and celebrate over 55 years of service to the city of Boston. My friend, my neighbor, Grace Walsh. Grace, why don't you make your way here? Grace, how long have you been on G Street? So Grace is, and I have virtually, the whole time that I raised my family on G Street, she was there. She's a stalwart. She's a great part of our community, and she's part of a great Boston family. And I have a resolution that kind of articulates that, so I'm going to read that. So Resolution of the Boston City Council. Whereas, "The Boston City Council extends their congratulations and best wishes to Grace Walsh on her retirement from the City of Boston's Assessing Department after 55 years of service." That alone deserves another applause. He said 57. Fifty-seven. Why didn't you stick it out for the other three and make it 60? You don't look old enough to have served our city 55 years, for sure. Whereas Grace Walsh was born and raised in Charlestown, Massachusetts, and we in South Boston never held that against her, by her parents and grandmother, who arrived from Donegal, Ireland, in search of a new life. Grace was the second oldest of five children and was only three years old when her father was killed in World War II. And whereas upon graduation from Cardinal Cushing High School in South Boston, Grace came to work for the city of Boston. Work and family were her priorities. She provided a wonderful education for her six children, as well as purchasing her own home on G Street, and much of it as a single parent. Whereas Grace never stopped working, there are very few, apprehensive to use this word, old timers in City Hall who don't know Grace, and they all say the same thing. She's one of the hottest working people you ever met. Grace often said, "I don't work for the mayor. I work for the people, for the taxpayers." And she championed her work and time for all of them. So therefore, be it resolved, the Boston City Council hereby congratulates Grace Walsh on her retirement and proclaims Wednesday, July 15, 2015, here in the city of Boston Going to ask Councilor Flaherty if he'd like to say a few words, and Councilor Baker.
Very briefly, living next to the Linehans, you should have got this award a long time ago, you know? But it just, I know, it just should be noted that Grace has served under six administrations. Mayor Hines, Mayor Collins, Mayor White, Mayor Flynn, Mayor Menino, and now Mayor Walsh. So I think that in and of itself is a tremendous feat. Very pleasant when you're coming and going from City Hall. Oftentimes, you're seeing Grace coming and going to work or coming to and from lunch. And whenever you call the Assessing Department, or whenever you need an answer from the Assessing Department, you know that there's one person you could always call that will take your call and get you the answer that you need for your constituents, and that's Grace Walsh. It's a pleasure to have worked with you. We're going to miss you here, but we're going to see you around the neighborhood. God bless you in retirement. Thank you.
I've had the pleasure to know Grace and her family for about 30 years now. I consider Grace one of those, and Grace's house actually, more than just Grace, it's one of those old-time family houses where everybody's always welcome. The doors open, similar to my house, similar to Linehan's, the houses that were always open. There was always something there to eat, or if you needed someplace to stay, Gracie Goods, I'm not allowed to say what your name is, but Gracie Goodchits, is it? Gracie Goodchits. But wanted to show the love to Grace and to her family also for 55 years, 57 years of service, and you know, that's about it. Love you, Grace.
Thank you, Grace. Bye, bye.
Said it was the best day of her life.
Nineteen sixty.
Nine?
July 20th.
July 20th, 19?
Sixty.
Great. So I'm going to ask all of my colleagues to come up, and we'll take a photo.
Right in the well, Dave.
In the bathroom. There's the big gas.
He would say that.
Gracie Goodchits.
Thanks, huh? Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
I'm in a new elevator.
I know, I know. We can have a...
You meet in the elevator? Uh-oh.
Thank you, Grace Walsh, for your tireless commitment to our city, and thank you for coming here today so that we could celebrate you in an appropriate way. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Communications from his honor, the mayor, Madam Clerk, please.
Docket number 1155. Message and order authorizing the Police Commissioner to accept and expend the FY16 State 9/11 Department PSAP and Regional Emergency Communication Center Support and Initiative Grant of $3,253,317 awarded by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, State 9/11 Department.
Docket 1155 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety.
Docket number 1156. Message and order authorizing the Police Commissioner to accept and expend the FY16 State 9/11 Department Training Grant Funds of $773,486 awarded by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, State 9/11 Department.
Docket 1156 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety.
Docket number 1157. Message and order authorizing the Public Works Commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $350,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources to retrofit city vehicles with alternative fuel resources.
Docket 1157 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment and Parks.
Docket number 1158. Message and order authorizing the Police Department to accept and expend a donation of $125,000 from the Downtown Boston Business Improvement District for the purpose and installation of video cameras and related equipment in the downtown Boston area.
Docket 1158 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety.
Docket number 1159. Message and order authorizing the Office of Environment, Energy, and Open Space to accept and expend a grant of $85,975 from the Green Communities Division of the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, known as DOR, for the purpose of installation of indirect active solar thermal domestic hot water systems at various Boston Fire Department facilities.
Docket 1159 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment and Parks.
Docket number 1160. Message and order authorizing the State Police to accept and expend a donation from Brigham and Women's Hospital for Children's Bicycle Helmets to be distributed to children in the community in conjunction with educational events on bike safety.
Councilor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1160. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1160 has passed. Madam Clerk, reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 1161. The Constable Barnes of Indira C Alvarez, Michael Campbell, Anthony Chillo, Tony Jones, Raoul Jacques, Tawanya Morris Williams, David Reeny, Teshetta Stevens Weston, Yolanda Stinson Tubbs, Yvonne L. Tofori, Geoninne Collin, William Flippin, Asha, Aisha, I'm sorry, Aisha Johnson, Kevin LaFis, Ronald Lucio, Barra Mohammed, and Wallace Tilford, having been duly approved by the Collective Treasurer, were received and approved.
Docket 1161 asks you a vote under usual terms and agreements. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1161 is approved under usual terms and conditions.
What you'd like me to do?
Yeah, Madam Clerk, docket 1162, docket 1173, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1162. Notice is received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of June 10, 2015. Docket number 1163. Notice is received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of June 17, 2015. Docket number 1164. Notice is received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its June 24, 2015 meeting. Docket number 1165. Notice is received from the mayor of the appointment of David Leonard as interim president of the Boston Library, effective July 6, 20... Boston Public Library, excuse me, effective July 6, 2015. Docket number 1166. Notice is received from the mayor of the appointment of Vivian Lee as chairperson of the Boston Conservation Commission. Docket number 1167. Notice is received from the mayor of the appointment of Christine Pulgeni, Esquire, as interim director of the mayor's Office of Consumer Affairs and Licensing, effective July 2, 2015. Docket number 1168. Notice is received from the mayor of his absence from the city from February, Friday, June 28, 2015, until Tuesday, July 2, 2015. Docket number 1169. Communication was received from the mayor regarding the withdrawal of docket number 113, originally filed with the clerk on December 17, 2014. Docket number 1170. Communication was received from Keegan-Worland LLP regarding N-Star Electric Company, EFSB 14-04, DPU 14-153 slash 14-154. Docket number 1171. Notice is received from the mayor of the appointment of Maria Fitzpatrick as an Associate Commissioner of Parks and Recreation Commission for a term expiring January 1, 2019. Docket number 1172. Notice is received from the mayor of the appointment of Sanjay Sani as an Associate Commissioner of the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term expiring January 1, 2019. Docket number 1173. Notice is received from the mayor of the appointment of Kimiata Campbell as a Commissioner to the Mayor's Commission for Persons with Disabilities Advisory Board for a term expiring April 1, 2016.
Docket 1162 through docket 1173 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, reports of committees, please.
Docket number 0114. The Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on December 10, 2014, docket number 0114. Petition for a special law regarding an act removing the City of Boston's Parks Department from approval of street closures permitting process submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Our Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Councilor Flaherty, on docket 0114.
Thank you, Mr. President. This matter was sponsored by Mayor Walsh and referred to committee on December 17 of 2014. This home rule petition would remove the Parks Department from street closure permitting process concerning recreational events. As we know, constituents calling us in order to get the street closed for a block party or a festival. Right now, it's currently governed and overseen by three departments: the Transportation Department, the Police Department, and the Parks Department. We held a hearing July 1 after hearing from Commissioner Chris Cook of the Parks Department, along with Commissioner Feenah Fien Dackery of Boston Transportation and Deputy Superintendent Ridge of the Boston Police Department. Testimony explained that removing the Parks Commissioner's involvement in permitting would relieve the applicants of an additional step and help streamline the process for organizing special events, something that I think we all here have advocated for in the past and that the administration has, had been promoting. Commissioner Fien Dackery and Officer Ridge discussed street closures as it pertains to traffic plans as well as public safety, and therefore the BTD and BPD would remain the overseers of any involvement in the process. And of course, this matter eventually has to get, because it's a home rule, has to go before the legislature and has to get signed up at Beacon Hill. So at this time, I'm recommending docket 0114 ought to pass, common sense, home rule petition, again, that streamlines the process and puts the permitting process where it belongs with respect to street closures. It keeps it within the domain of the Boston Transportation Department, and for public safety purposes, has the oversight of the Boston Police Department and alleviates the Parks Department of having to get involved in that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Flaherty moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0114. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0114 has passed. Madam Clerk, matter is recently heard for possible action.
Docket, now, do you want me to read?
Yeah, please read docket 0562 and 3.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 0562. Order for hearing regarding the emergency impact of closing Long Island Shelter substance abuse programs. And docket number 0563. Order for hearing regarding the emergency impact of closing Long Island of Boston's homeless community.
Our Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, Councilor Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a robust and productive working session with a strong attendance from advocates, shelter guests, those in recovery. I want to thank Council Yancey, lead sponsor of these two orders, for putting these matters forward, Council Jackson and Yancey for their participation, and many of you had staff representation there as well. This matter was recessed on, so we will continue this discussion, but I'll just highlight a couple of the top lines that came out of it. One, the issue of Philadelphia Insurance denying the claims for the two drug treatment centers, Victory Programs in Bay Cove, denying their business interruption claim. Secondly, the need for a bill of rights for shelter guests system-wide. Thirdly, the need for an overhaul and an improvement when it comes to staff training, with a highlight on sensitivity, treating shelter guests with respect, compassion, cultural competency. And then finally, the stark inequality when it comes to women within the system, when it comes to substance abuse. We're seeing eight beds for every man in one, so it's eight to one in terms of an inequality and disparity there when it comes to women, both in treatment and also in a need for shelter beds. So we are encouraged by the step to make Woods-Mullen a women's-only shelter, but the issue of inequality when it comes to services for women in treatment and as shelter guests, that disparity chasm continues to widen. So those were some of the top lines that came out of it. The work will continue. As I said, the working session was recessed, not adjourned, and I suspect that the lead sponsor also has a report and something to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Presley. Councilor Yancey?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank the Chair of this committee, the founder and Chair of this committee, for holding an expeditious working session. I have more than 30 pages of notes. I'm not going to go through them here, but what I would say is that the problem of drug addiction and homelessness is pervasive, as each member of this body knows, and appears to be getting worse. I say it appears to be getting worse because I see more visible evidence of homelessness in the city of Boston, and may well be because we no longer have those beds on Long Island, and many of the homeless who ordinarily would be out there are now in the streets of Boston. But it's an issue that I believe is very urgent. It's an issue that's really crying out for sustained attention on the part of this body and the part of the administration. I know the administration's working very hard, and they had a horrible situation to deal with back in October of 2014, when the administration was forced to close the bridge and thereby close access to Long Island. I agree with the Chair that the testimony was very robust. We heard from the administration, as well as several advocacy groups, and I want to highlight the point raised by the Chair about the unacceptable level of disparities based on gender that exist with regards to our safety net system concerning homelessness. We must do more to protect the dignity and well-being of females who are homeless in the streets of Boston. The other point I'd like to make, Mr. President, is that we have made every effort in the city of Boston to accommodate the results of that crisis of closing down the facilities, but I don't think we've exhausted all of the remedies. For example, I believe we should get the state more deeply involved. Right now, we have a vacant building as a part of the Shattuck Hospital Complex, a building that is scheduled to be razed, and then there's another building with significant square footage, which is in great shape and probably does not have to be razed. So I believe that when we get all the recess and take a look at some other options, that should be explored as well. But I am very pleased with the leadership of the Chair of this committee. We did address a lot of issues. We heard from, of course, the interim director of the Public Health Commission. We heard from representatives of the Department of Neighborhood Development, as well as the chief of Human Services, Felix Royal. And all it does for me, Mr. President, say, we have a lot of work to do as a society to deal with the issues of homelessness and substance abuse. So I have filed several late filed matters, which we will address before the close of this meeting, that raises many of the questions which, because of time constraints, we were not able to get to at that working session. And the committee will produce a report with a series of recommendations as well. So thank you very much for your attention to this matter, and unfortunately, it's doubtful that both issues of substance abuse and homelessness is not going to go away in the city of Boston anytime soon, but I think we can accelerate a solution by staying focused on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Yancey. Docket 0562 and 0563 will remain in the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities. Madam Clerk?
Docket number 0346. Message and order for your approval of a home rule petition to the General Court entitled, "Petition for a Special Law Regarding the Act Related to Segregated Reserve Funds in the City of Boston."
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Councilor Flaherty.
Mr. President, this matter was sponsored by Mayor Walsh. Mr. President, this matter was sponsored by Mayor Walsh and referred to the Joint Committees on Government Operations and Ways and Means on February 11th of 2015. We held a hearing yesterday to discuss this home rule petition, which would essentially eliminate the state requirement for the Boston Public Schools to set aside a percentage of their budget in a separate reserve fund. We heard from Nathan Cooter and Michelle Goldberg from BPS Finance Department that discussed that the fund was actually established back in 1980s in case of extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures that arise within the Boston Public Schools. But the money has never served a purpose or financial need unlike other reserve funds that are set up for specific costs such as late registering, late registering of students and unplanned overages. We had testimony here from Sam Tyler from the Boston Municipal Research Bureau, whose organization enthusiastically supports this measure, as we also received a letter from the Finance Commission, Matt Cahill, who submitted written testimony supporting eliminating this fund requirement as well, basically citing the city's very different improved economic circumstances today than the fund was originally created back in the 1980s. So at this time, I'm recommending that the matter ought to pass, but would offer an opportunity through the Chair to the co-chair of the yesterday's hearing, which is Councilor Mark Ciomo. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you, Councilor Flaherty. The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Councilor Ciomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. As Councilor Flaherty mentioned, we are in full support of docket 0346. Because this reserve fund is essentially made up of monies that support expenditures in the budget already, they are not effective as a reserve fund. Additionally, the way this fund takes money from various lines in the school budget and holds them until May 1st of each year to satisfy the fund requirement, it clouds transparency in the school budget and makes year-to-year comparisons very difficult. In fact, Sam Tyler, as Councilor Flaherty mentioned, from the Boston Municipal Research Bureau, attended and gave testimony in support, calling it long overdue, and he characterized the reserve as an administrative nightmare. Because these funds are not acting as a true reserve, I'm very comfortable removing the requirements that will allow us more transparent budget management and oversight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ciomo. Councilor Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think the co-chairs did a great job yesterday at the hearing. You have the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, the Chair of Government Operations, and even though I wasn't in my committee, you also had the Chair of the Post-Allen Oversight Committee there. Mr. President, I am going to vote for this measure, but not for the reasons articulated. I believe that there's far too much oversight of the city of Boston by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I think that as far as home rule goes, this issue should be strictly internal to the city of Boston. However, I am a little disappointed, Mr. President, that when we had the hearing, we did not have a representative from the administration's Budget Office. I was very disappointed with that. And if you read the letter that was submitted by the City of Boston FinCom, and I have some questions whether or not we even need a FinCom just between you and I, because again, that was imposed on us by the state, but if you look at the very last paragraph of his letter to you, Mr. President, it states that the Finance Commission fully supports removing the need for the city to maintain the School Department section, I'll repeat that, the School Department section of this act, and recommends consulting with the City of Boston Chief Financial Officer, David Sweeney, to garner his opinion regarding the City of Boston and County Offices' reserve portion. Obviously, the Chief Financial Officer supports the measure before us, or it wouldn't be before us today. But I did have a number of questions. Some were answered, and some of the answers raised additional questions. For example, the administration through the School Department submitted a fiscal year 15 year-end reserve summary, which far exceeds the reserve that we are discussing today. It's almost three times what the reserve we have in the School Department, which further clouds the issue more than anything else. So I'm not supporting this because I'm satisfied with the answers we received, because I'm not. I've yet to receive information about the projected, or even the actual year-to-date revenues and year-to-date expenditures, subject to adjustments as they always happen, but we should at least have those preliminary numbers. I made that request yesterday, and we still don't have it. But I am supporting this solely because, I recall, back in 1986, when we had those marathon sessions debating the so-called Traeger amendments, and we went through a lot of these issues, and my concern then is the same concern I have now. I think it's too onerous for us to have the state looking over our shoulders as we manage the fiscal affairs of the city of Boston. And that's the only reason I'm supporting this today. Otherwise, I would suggest that we wait until, as indicated in the memo from Nathan Cooter that BPS has submitted the formal letters for reserved, as well as their backup to the city audit. However, these documents have not been finalized. So why come to us if you have incomplete information? But again, because I feel so strongly that the state has too much of a role in dealing with the city's finances, I want to support this today, but through you, Mr. President, I'm requesting that this body receives the most recent financial data concerning year-to-date revenues and year-to-date expenditures, at least as of the end of fiscal year 2015, knowing that they are going to be adjusted, but at least it gives us something to work with in terms of the actual experience. But again, if it wasn't the issue of home rule, I will be voting against this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Yancey. Councilor Flaherty and Councilor Ciomo move acceptance of the committee report. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0346 has been passed. motions, orders, and resolutions, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1174, Councilor O'Malley actually moves for a suspension, so what, before I, should I read? I'll read it in, and then he can give you the suspension. Docket number 1174, Councilor O'Malley offers the following order for hearing to discuss the city's natural gas leak problem.
Chair recognizes Councilor O'Malley on docket 1174.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I move to substitute language to reflect a technical change, to include Counselor Josh Saicham is the co-sponsor on this.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right.
Thank you.
Councilor Saicham is so added.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a hearing order that I'm introducing regarding the issue of gas leaks in the city of Boston. Local group of concerned moms calling themselves mothers out front met with me, they've met with many of you over the course of these last several months, and really highlighting the importance of this issue. The natural gas pipeline network in greater Boston is extensive and provides much-needed hot water, heat, and other amenities to a great number of people. However, much of this system is decades old and starting to cause serious problems throughout the city. Most immediate concern is the growing number of gas leaks in our neighborhoods. Recent Harvard University study revealed that the number of gas leaks in greater Boston is two to three times greater than what was previously thought. Now, in doing research in this, we've seen numbers at 3,000 plus, 4,000 plus, 5,000 plus. The most conservative estimate that everyone seems to agree on comes from a study by Boston University in 2012, which pegs the number at 3,300 gas leaks in the city of Boston. The amount of natural gas lost each year through these leaks is more than $90 million, and this cost is absorbed directly by the ratepayers, by the constituents, our constituents and us. Now, not only is there a considerable financial burden associated with these leaks, there's obviously a large environmental concern. Natural gas has been proven to be 86 times more harmful in carbon dioxide during the first 20 years after emission. Also, the gas leaks have been shown to kill trees in our parks and on our sidewalks. Indeed, last year in Dorchester, we saw a house that exploded as a result of a gas leak. Fortunately, no one was hurt. Do you know I've been working alongside with all of you, particularly my at-large colleagues, as well as Congressman Lynch, the mayor, Senator Mike Rush, Representative Ed Coppinger, as we deal with this proposed Algonquin Pipeline through the West Roxbury section of my district. Last week, the West Roxbury Transcript quoted Representative Spectra Energy that is building the pipeline, saying, quote, "West Roxbury's natural gas system reached a dangerously low level that caused significant risk to the reliability of service." In other words, what they are saying is that we need to increase the amount of gas in order to serve all these customers. Now, I'm not an engineer, but I would argue if they could fix some of these leaks, it would go a long way to dealing with the proposed, or the supposed scarcity of this utility. This is an environmental issue, this is a public safety issue, this is a public health issue, this is a consumer protection issue. It is our duty, it's our responsibility to make sure that we can convene the utilities, the Mayor's Office of Energy and Environment, as well as the different stakeholders and advocates, to articulate, advocate, and develop real strategies that we can then implement to address these, fix these leaks, and make sure going forward that we have safety as the paramount concern, as well as protecting the ratepayers, all of whom we represent. So look forward to an expediated, expeditious hearing, and hope you'll all join me in signing on, because this affects every single neighborhood in the city of Boston. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor O'Malley. Councilor Saicham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Councilor O'Malley for allowing me to partner with him on this and for his leadership on this important issue. I think, as he stated very eloquently, this is an issue that affects so many facets of our city, the environment, public health, the fiscal health of our constituents, the money that's being spent to cover the losses of these gas leaks is enormous. And I think what's often lost in the discussion, and this is something I learned after recent meetings with the Mothers Out Front group and other advocates, is that the utilities have no financial incentive, really, right now to make these changes, because the costs are borne by the ratepayers. So not only is there the financial cost, but the environmental risks as well. The Comm Ave Mall, which is out front of my home and a major park in the district, has recently suffered quite a few dead trees because of leaking gas in the pipeline, in the pipes underneath the Commonwealth Avenue. This continues to happen. Some of them are being fixed. I think our Public Works Department, who has been, I think, very proactive on this issue, has been trying to address this, but we need to find new solutions. We need to make sure that, you know, the utilities, the city, other stakeholders and advocates are all on the same page, at the same table, talking about these important issues, because we can't, we literally can't afford, I think, as ratepayers, to continue paying for this, but also the environmental impacts, the fact that this leaking gas adds to the greenhouse gases, which are creating climate change, which are, we've seen in the most recent winter, is an ever-more present threat in the city of Boston and across the country. So I look forward to working with Councilor O'Malley, the stakeholders, the utility companies, the Mayor's Office, and many of the residents and advocates across the city of Boston and across the region, to try and figure out a way to solve this problem that's going to work for everyone. I look forward to the hearing and hopefully solving this sometime soon. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Saicham. Councilor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend Counselor O'Malley and Counselor Saicham. Add my name to this. It's an important public safety issue. We've long talked about gas leaks under the city. In fact, all of us have been witness, I think, at one point or another, to exploding sewer covers and things like that, that tend to happen because the gas providers do not do a good job repairing and maintaining the infrastructure underneath our city. And Counselor O'Malley hit it right on the head when he said, "The reason they're putting a new pipeline is because they have no pressure." And the reason they have no pressure is because they don't fix the leaks that are there now. There's leaking gas all over the city and every neighborhood. So the message to Eversource and Nstar and those providers is, go in and fix what you have first before we grant you something new and improved. Thank you, Mr. President. Please add my name.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Please add Counselor Murphy's name. Counselor Baker, Counselor Ciomo, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Presley. Add my name, please. Counselor Flaherty, do you still want to speak? Counselor Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I too would like to commend Counselor O'Malley and Counselor Saicham for raising this issue. Sadly, I did have a fatality in my district. Some 15 years ago, on Ashton Street, a three-story structure with six families was exploded as a result of a gas leak from the street. So this is a very important issue as well, Mr. President, and would like to have my name added, and a note that whenever I drive around Boston and I smell gas, I call immediately. Many times, the response is blasé, as far as some of the utilities go, but it is an issue that we should also focus attention on and make sure that our aging infrastructure, including our utility infrastructure, is addressed on a regular basis. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey, and please add Counselor Yancey's name to that matter. Docket 1174 is assigned to the Committee on Environment and Parks.
Docket number 1175, Counselor Baker offers the following, an ordinance amending Chapter 16 of the City of Boston Code, ordinances prohibiting the sale and use of synthetic cannabinoids and other dangerous chemical compounds.
Our Chair recognizes Counselor Baker on docket 1175.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I'm here to address a growing concern that's taking place across the city of Boston and also across our entire country. All over the greater Boston, all over greater Boston, various forms of synthetic drugs are being legally sold in our neighborhoods, specifically synthetic marijuana, which has been steadily making our ways, making its way onto our streets. Synthetic marijuana is unique because unlike other illegal substances, is oftentimes legal and sold at our local gas stations and convenience stores. It's also used to enhance the experience when some people may be on Suboxone or Methadone, and they would need to have drug testing. This will skirt that drug testing. So that is part of the clientele that is using this synthetic marijuana. Synthetic marijuana sold by popular names such as K2 and Spice, masked in small, colorful foil packets with pictures of smiley faces, popular cartoon characters such as Scooby-Doo, and other child-friendly images, and is innocently labeled as incense and potpourri. Synthetic marijuana users have reported psychotic effects like extreme anxiety, paranoia, hallucinations, and many K2 Spice users have also been taken to poison control centers, reporting symptoms that include heart rate, rapid heart rate, vomiting, agitation, confusion, and in a few cases, this drug has even been associated with heart attacks. Very similar to angel dust back in the day, Mr. President, that was in some of our neighborhoods, the behaviors and some of the side effects. In New Hampshire, synthetic marijuana has been linked to at least 41 overdoses, leading Governor Hassan to declare it a state of emergency and pass legislation just last week to ban it. However, despite federal and state legislators' attempts to prohibit synthetic marijuana, even here in Massachusetts, manufacturers have been able to alter the chemical compounds of their products and produce new types of synthetic marijuana with chemicals that do not fall under existing federal and state-controlled substance laws. In an effort to close this loophole, I am proposing an ordinance prohibiting not just the salient use of synthetic marijuana found in stores today, but all future types of synthetic cannabinoids and any other dangerous chemical compounds similar to synthetic marijuana. It is my hope and belief that this ordinance will give Boston Police Department the authority to implement and enforce the prohibition and possession and sale of any type of synthetic marijuana. If passed, any person or places of business is found to be in violation of this ordinance will be assessed a civil fine of $300 for each day the violation occurs. I stand before you not only as a Boston City Council, but as a father of two young children who wants to see the end of this dangerous designer drug in our communities. I strongly urge you all to join me in a citywide ban of synthetic marijuana and to ensure the future well-being of the city of Boston and its residents. And we will have, I would think, a long hearing on this to discuss all the intricacies of this ordinance. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Counselor Flaherty, you'd like your name added? Please add my name. Add Counselor Ciomo's name. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Murphy. You got that, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Great. Docket 1175 is assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Personnel orders, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1176, Counsel Linnahan for Counselor.
Counselor McCarthy moves suspension of the rules and passes of docket 1176. All in favor, say aye. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1176 has passed. Madam Clerk, I'm informed by the clerk that there are five late-file matters which, in absence of objection, will be added to the agenda. Hearing no objections, the matters are so added. The clerk will read the first late-file matter, which is Personnel in Nature.
July 14, 2015, Counsel Bill Linnahan for Counsel Siomo.
Counsel Siomo moves suspension of the rules and passage of the first late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The first late-file matter has passed.
Second late-file matter is from Counsel Michelle Wu, Boston City Council. Dear Madam Clerk, I am writing to inform you that I will not be in attendance on July 15, 2015, City Council's meeting. If you have any questions, please contact my office. Sincerely, Counselor at Large, Michelle Wu.
Just in case the question arises, Counsel Yancey pointed out that there was 1177 also was a personnel matter. It was the same personnel matter in duplicate. We did 1176, which covers that personnel order, in case you had any questions. Thank you, Counsel Yancey, for pointing that out. The third late-file matter, Madam Clerk.
In City Council, Order of Counsel Charles Yancey ordered that under the provisions of Section 1.17F of Chapter 376 of the Acts of 1951, as amended and other applicable provisions of law, is Honored the Mayor, be and hereby is requested to obtain and deliver to the City Council within one week of its receipt thereof, the following information. Please provide the steps being taken to eliminate disparities in facilities and services based on gender concerning the homeless and recovery clients. Please include the following information. And there are 14 specific questions asked. It was filed in the City Council on July 15, 2015.
Counsel Yancey moves suspension of the rules and passage of the third late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The third late-file matter has passed. Madam Clerk.
Order of Counsel Charles Yancey ordered that under the provisions of Section 1.17F of Chapter 376 of the Acts of 1951, as amended and any other applicable provisions of law, is Honored the Mayor, be and hereby is requested to obtain and deliver to the City Council within one week of the receipt thereof, the following information. Please describe the steps being taken by the city of Boston to eliminate disparities in facilities and service based on gender concerning programs. Please include the following information. This 17F includes six questions. It was filed in the City Council July 15, 2015.
Counsel Yancey, did you want to speak on this matter?
I did very briefly.
Yes, go ahead.
On all three. First, I want to thank our central staff for preparing this, particularly Ms. O'Donnell. I want to thank you so much. But a technical matter, I believe is Section 17F, not 1.17F. But these, all three of these matters are related to the working session that was held earlier this week, and I thank our colleagues for supporting the 17Fs. But I believe it should simply be Section 17F, and I'm sorry didn't have a chance to catch this before we submit it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you just edit those? It is 1.17? No, I understand that. We'll correct it, yep, on all three matters, please. So on the second late, on the fourth late-file matter, which is the second 17F, Counsel Yancey moves suspension of the rules and passage of the fourth late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The fourth late-file matter has passed.
Mr. President, if I may. Do you want me to recess for a second here? No, I don't think a recess is necessary. Different citations, so I would rely on our central staff and keep it at 1.17F since this refers to a different chapter than what we have on the green sheets. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Okay, well, so we will remain at the, Madam Clerk, so those matters that have passed, 1.17F.
Of the Acts of 1951.
And this, the fifth late-file matter. Let me, you read that?
I will, Mr. President. Order of Counsel Charles Yancey ordered that under the provisions of Section 1.17F of Chapter 376 of the Acts of 1951, as amended and any other applicable provisions of law, is Honored the Mayor, be and hereby is requested to obtain and deliver to the City Council within one week of the receipt thereof, the following information. Please describe the steps being taken by the city of Boston to eliminate disparities in facilities, services regarding recovery clients. Please include the following information. This 17F request includes 14, four questions, excuse me, and it was filed in the City Council on July 15, 2015.
Counsel Yancey moves suspension of the rules and passage of the fifth late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And the fifth late-file matter has passed. Thank you, Staff Counsel. At this time, anybody would like to pull a matter from the green sheets? Counsel Siomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Clerk, docket 1071 from, on page two, assigned for further action, and the detail is on page 12 of 12.
I'll read that in.
Please, please read that into record.
Page 12 of 12, in the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 1071, sponsored by the mayor. Message and order approving appropriation of $600,000 for the purpose of paying costs of a feasibility study and schematic design work associated with window/door replacement projects at the following schools: Young Achievers, Science and Math, Community Academy of Science and Health, Tech Boston Academy, Ellis School, McKay School, Curly School, and the Sumner School. Upon completion of the feasibility study, the city of Boston may be eligible for a grant from the Mass School Building Authority, set amount to be expended under the direction of the Public Facilities Department on behalf of Boston Public Schools. This matter was referred to committee on June 17, 2015. A hearing was held on June 23, 2015, and a first reading of this matter was received on June 24, 2015, and it was then assigned for further action.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Counsel Siomo, you have the floor.
Yes, so as the clerk mentioned, we had our first vote on June 24. This requires two votes. It's for a $600,000 appropriation for the schools aforementioned earlier, and I recommend passage for the second vote.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo moves acceptance of docket, what is that number, Madam Clerk?
Docket number 1071, Mr. President.
1071. Counsel Siomo moves acceptance and passage of docket 1071. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1071 has passed. Do you need a roll call vote? Yes, we do. Madam Clerk, please give a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo.
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes.
Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes.
Counsel Jackson.
Yes.
Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Linnahan.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel Presley. Counsel Wu. Counsel Yancey.
Yes.
Counsel Saikum. Mr. President.
Eleven votes in the affirmative and two absent on docket 1071. 1071 has passed. There is one late-file matter which, in absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing, hearing no objections, the matters are so added. The chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. I'd ask all guests and members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel Baker, James Carley and Helen Anastas. For Counsel Siomo, John McNeil Jr., Owen Tolan, Marion Quinn. For Counsel Lamatina, Virginia Di Lorenzo, Michael Kane, Vito Orlando, Francesca Badolato, Margaret McNichols, Ronald Taylor, and Jean Sasso. For Counsel Linnahan, Flaherty, and Baker, Donald Keenan and Elaine M. McGuire. For I and Counsel Wu, Ann Chan. For Counsel Murphy, James P. Carley, Mary Eileen Halier, Senator Thomas Kennedy, Troy Rivers, and Ivory Hoskins. For Counsel O'Malley, Stanley A. Scazza. For Counsel Yancey, Carolyn Peoples, Dexter Dillard-Urey Jr., Menalita Johnson, Loretta Janice Williams. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals and is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, July 22, at 12 noon. All those in favor of adjournment say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The council is so adjourned.[1688.33]